Well, good morning. It's nine o'clock, 9:01, and we're going to go ahead and start our regular workshop meeting that is one week earlier, and it is January 20th. Mr. Superintendent, can you please take over?
Gladly. Good morning, everybody, and it's good to see everyone. I know we've been in Tampa and North Carolina and all over the place, parts of the county. So what we're going to do this morning is Dr. Prince is going to present on our, the data that we received from the state on our scores. You have the, he'll put it up on the screen, but you also have it in front of you, and he's going to kind of go by cell by cell, and we're going to get in the weeds just a little bit with y'all and then answer any questions that you may have. Then after that, I'm going to talk about the year in review, I guess is what it's entitled, and to talk about the goals and objectives that I had for this year, give you a report on that, give you a report of how we've done this year, and then share my goals for next year. As part of that process, as part of my annual evaluation, I would like to come to the board on July the 11th, meet with you all if you choose to individually before that time based upon what I say today, and then have individual meetings, and then have that voted on on July 11th, board meeting, my annual evaluation, as well as approval of the goals for 17, 18. Keep looking to make sure that that's correct, 17, 18. It seems like a while ago it was the year 2000, the millennium, when the world was supposed to shut down. So here we are in 16, 17, and speaking of millennial, Dr. Prince is here, and he's done a fantastic job this year. We should have most of our team, but we have this as well.
Nice segue.
Cabinet group. And we presented this last week. We had an excellent leadership summit. Some of you were able to stop by, as I mentioned at the board meeting the other night, and the reports that we got, we always do, we always evaluate, do self-evaluations of everything that we do, and you know, what we did with our principals and sharing this information and data, and then yesterday and today and this week, they're coming back in and already establishing their plans of action for this next school year. We think the summertime is a time to kind of catch up, but it's also a time to work very, very hard to prepare for next year. And so we've got a good story to tell on this past year, and we'll continue to do that. So, Dr. Prince, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. I didn't know if the introduction was an indictment on my attention span, but we're going to, we've got some great news to share today, and I want to welcome our board members to the work session. So, Mr. Gent talked about basically the year in review, and we're going to get in, dive in a little bit into the weeds, like Mr. Gent said, with regards to our scores and how we performed. But first, I want to talk a little bit about some things that we're, that really are going to impact us next year. One of our priorities is really to improve our attendance. We have a real attendance issue, especially in our secondary schools, and we're really going to tackle that, that issue, and we're already kind of formulating some plans with our schools to deal with that. So our average daily attendance actually, now this is the only, only bit of bad news that we had with our attendance, but 93.2% of our students were, that was our average daily attendance in our public schools, that dipped to 92.8%. Now, we know in order to take the next step with our performance, especially at our high schools, because this is where the problem is most prevalent, is that we have to confront this issue and address it. So that is one of my main focuses for next year is to kind of tackle this. But also, what has an impact, which is called a lagging indicator, is our industry certifications for our senior class. Now, when we project our school grades for our high schools, it's basically last year's industry certifications for our senior classes. It lags behind a year. So next year, we're going to see some really large increases, and we've actually increased, and I've got the slide up, significantly in our schools. This is senior classes, and these are industry certification exams that our students are passing where they can enter the work field immediately if they so choose, and if they're not going to end up going to college. So Centennial High was up 27%, Fort Pierce Central 83%, Westwood 52%, LPA 68%, Treasure Coast 115%, and Port St. Lucie High School 199%. Now, I'm going to mention Port St. Lucie High School a lot, because we've had some, just an amazing transformation on that campus, and I'm very, very proud of the work that that staff has done. But these wonderful numbers, now this is students that are passing sometimes two and three industry certification exams in a year, but these numbers will benefit our school grade next summer. Now, also, these industry certification exams have an impact on, on the budgets of the schools, because every time a student passes one of those, then the state sends revenue to the school. It's basically a wonderful opportunity for the teachers, because they get bonus incentives, but also the school gets that money back. They get 80% of that money. So you can see in a single year, Treasure Coast actually earned 104,000 additional dollars. Westwood earned 63,000 additional dollars. Centennial earned 132,000 additional dollars. Central 85,000 additional dollars. Lincoln Park 38,000 additional dollars. And Port St. Lucie High, $126,000 in additional revenue. Now, that's great, and it's a great opportunity for these schools, because they can put this money back into their schools, the money goes directly back into them, and it basically also incentivizes their success, because they want to continue to work to make sure that they, not only it's doing good things for the students, but it's also a revenue generator for the schools. So I want to jump into our performance.
Hold on a second. Before we go further, if you could, could you just make a note, and I don't know how to do this, but to see one school compared to the other school, what is the lid, would you say, for each school? And I don't, I don't need it now, but you know, Centennial obviously is bigger, but what would you like to see their projection at before, before we start hitting a 0% or 1% or 2% gain, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we want all of our students, we want all of our students to have an acceleration success, whether that's an AP success, whether that's enroll in passing a dual enrollment class, whether that's passing an industry certification.
I'm just talking about the industry certification, so.
Well, the bottom line is, not all the students pass those assessments. Our goal is for 100% of our students that are enrolled in those courses to pass, and we're having a lot of success. That's a difficult question, because when you say what is our lid or what is our ceiling, it's like anything else, we want 100% of the students that are enrolled in the, in the course to actually earn that. Now, we've had a great stride and great increases, but I would have to take a look and see what, how many students were in the course, and what is the pass rate for every single different assessment, and there's a lot of different assessments.
Well, no, that, that's not what I was asking. When I was looking at, for instance, Port St. Lucie went up 199%, I was thinking more kids were taking the classes. I wasn't thinking that was just the percentage of kids actually passing. Does that make sense?
No, it makes perfect sense.
It is both?
Yes. More students are taking the courses, and more students are passing.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
It's a great story. I mean, and they've done a wonderful job.
What I was wondering is, so let's say Port St. Lucie has, you know, six career tech, and we want 125 in there, so we're roughly around 1,000 kids.
Right.
You know, we want, we know the number that we're trying to shoot for, for passing the test, but how many more kids can that school support in that career tech program? You know what I'm saying?
Right, and I know that.
That was what I'm saying, is so when you start comparing them, I don't want a school not, because they don't have enough capacity, put more kids in a program.
Right. And I think that all of the principals, we just have been meeting, the high schools met on Monday, I think we're all having those discussions as where do we see opportunity, and where our students are successful, and where we can add staff.
Well, that's what I was, you know, and I say that, looking at Lincoln Park pulling in 38,000, you know, where is their opportunity really to make more money if they don't have the career opportunities at that school?
Right.
They're a little different, because they're the Magnet School, and they're the IB program, and so you can't fit all that in there.
Oh, I know, but that's what I'm saying, is I hate to compare oranges, apples to oranges, and say.
Right, so it's not a negative, it wouldn't be viewed as a negative, because that's not, that's, that's not a quote conference of high school in a sense of that, because of the other specialized programs that they have. Also, sometimes students may be, may not be involved in this, but they're in some kind of other acceleration, whether it's dual enrollment, IB programs. So the industry certification is just one indicator of acceleration, of the acceleration. So depending upon what that school offers, so LPA would always be, wouldn't be anything negative, it just means that's not.
That's not their heritage strength.
Programs that they have at that school. The other schools, the other high schools have different programs, and we look to either expand that, and if something's not working, to even remove it.
That's what I'm saying, is like at Westwood, maybe their ag programs maxed out.
Right.
Like Emory Riddle at Central, and I know that's not a career one, but you know, where, where's our, you know, our point where we can't take any more kids at certain schools, and how are we going to expand those programs, is what I was thinking.
Well, we want to provide all of our students those opportunities, but also there's.
Teacher certification.
Teacher certification, not just that, but you've got, some of our electives are being used up by intensive reading classes, which the students are required to take, so that takes up those electives. So we're gradually transforming our high schools. We want to make sure that the students, when they graduate high school, are ready for the world of work or the world of college. And I think we made a great stride, because that was one of the superintendent's focus for his second year, and I think you've seen the results generated from that. We're going to continue. We haven't reached our ceiling, I think that's what you're saying, I mean, because we have a lot of opportunity here.
That's what I was asking. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of, you mentioned Westwood, we took a tour of Westwood, and they have a CNA program over there, and we were told that everyone in the CNA program, all the students, had passed the industry certification.
Dr. Mills, can you move your microphone a little bit closer, please?
But the, but the school, I mean, the class only has six, I think, that they were, that they said they were able to really have in that particular program, that cert, that industry. So, well, I'm looking forward to having more students have that opportunity. I don't know what we need to do to make that a possibility, but CNA is a big thing for a lot of the students, and it would be great to be able to expand that program with only six or eight students in the classroom. That's pretty low for the.
Dr. Waugh, did you want to come up and address that?
Well, while she's coming up, one of the things that we've been working with, with the Economic Development Council, talking with the community, the college, the state college, and is to expand those programs, so that whatever the, like, there's a demand for nurses, there's a demand for nurses, and to accelerate, maybe not, I don't know if the word accelerates, the appropriate word there, but to expand that, so, so that it can, it's almost a specialized for a nursing program with a, with a pathway through the community, through the state college locally, and then, and then working with partnerships with either Lawnwood or Martin Health. Martin Health is really the big player in this right now with the expansion of the hospital and the three floors down south, and we've been having conversations with the different groups that are out there about how can we help meet that demand at the, at the level.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because at the FSBA, there was a county that is doing just that now, where they are actually bussing their kids to the college to get that certain certifications, and then they bring them back to school, like during the day type thing, so that's interesting.
Dr. Waugh?
Yes, specific to, good morning, everyone. Specific to the question about Westwood and their medical program, there's three medical industry certifications those kids have an opportunity to get. There's the medical assistant, there's the EKG, and then there's the CNA that you specifically referred to. The CNA requires a registered nurse, and Westwood recently hired a registered nurse, so that part is somewhat new for them. That course is capped at 15. It is regulated, you can't go higher than 15 because of the clinical experience, so Westwood is building up to that 15 now that they have an RN on staff. Theirs is the newest addition of CNA specifically. And then more in general, the only real caps on CTE classes, terms of enrollment, because they, they can be based on interest, we can always add faculty, is facility cap. So if there's an expensive specialized lab, like a kitchen and culinary or an engineering lab, that could create a cap, but other than that, we don't cap them. They are based on interest, and we grow them as needed by student interest and economic need. May I ask her?
Okay, so we're going to give all of you a test as soon as this is over on what you're because we are going to get into some details with regards to our, our schools and the performance of our schools. And this is really the exciting stuff, and some people might be bored by this, but I just live for this stuff. You have no idea. So we're going to get into the performance of our FSA by grade, and I, and you have copies of this, but I just want to talk a little bit about FSA reading, because I tell the principals this all the time, it is the hardest thing to move reading proficiency. It's the hardest thing to move, and if you can move it 2% or 3% a year, over five years, you've transformed a generation, because you can improve that proficiency in a, in a school district by up to 15 to 20%. So it's very difficult, and the reason I really want to get into the weeds about this is because our schools did an unbelievable job, and we start with grade three, now the state improved by 4%, we improved by three, but if you improve by 6% or more, you've done something special. And as you can see, there's a whole row of just dramatic performance at Bay Shore 6%, Chestermore, Fair Lawn, and then take a look at Floresta, 15%, Lawnwood 13%, Mariposa 12%, St. Lucie Elementary 8%, Windmill Point 8%, Mosaic 8%, Alapata Flats 12%, and I skipped over Manatee, but they were at 6%, and then Palm Point 13%, St. Lucie West 7, and Westgate 6. So just huge improvements in third grade, and then we go to fourth, and if you notice on fourth grade, the state improved by 4%. St. Lucie County increased by 7%, and just, the schools just did once again a tremendous job. Bay Shore 10%, Fair Lawn 16%, Floresta 16%, Parkway 27% improvement in proficiency, Savannah Ridge 16%, White City 14%, Alapata Flats 15%, Manatee 16%, Oakhamic 14%, St. Lucie West K8 9%. So just, just huge increases across the board. And then I also, yep.
He's going quick there, so I just want to pause for a second, because that was fourth grade proficiency, even though he's doing the double digits, if you look at some of the other schools, there's significant gains in fourth grade that are there, just like we saw in the third grade. So when you get over a certain percentage, that's statistically significant. So, you know, it's really a good story to tell, but I wanted to give them a chance to look at that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't take too long. But I just wanted also to point one other thing out, too, is having perspective and looking at the school gr, or the grade cohort, and I just want to point out a couple of things. So fifth grade, we had a 1% increase, and the state had a 1% increase. But what you also have to look is the cohort. So the cohort was at 43% proficiency last year, and then that group of kids in fifth grade went to 45. So sometimes things are a little bit misleading, and where you, it appears that there were drops at schools, actually, if you look at the cohort, and this is a cohort at Floresta, that cohort was at 36% proficiency last year, and they went to 43%. So they appeared flat, that they made no growth in fifth grade, but actually, they made significant growth. The cohort at Lawnwood was at 32%, they appeared flat, they went from 32 to 38. And then you've got a school like Morningside that had a drop, it appeared, but actually that cohort went from 30 to 42. So we have to keep things in perspective. I know at White City appeared, they had a 14 percentage point drop, but actually, they didn't. That group of students was at 31% proficiency last year, and they went from 31 to 32. The same thing is true for Alapata, going from 26 to 40% proficient, where it appeared they had a 1% drop. And lastly, Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts, it appeared they had an 11-point drop, but actually, that cohort of students improved by 7%. So this is something we remind our principals about, although we had success across the board in the district, it's important to take a look at those, those cohort of students to see how the cohort of students perform from one year to the next. So fifth grade ELA, yes, Dr. Mills?
What do we contribute this great reading increase efficiency within our school?
Well, the, some of the attributable elements that went into our success, I believe, are two things, well, three, I'm going to say. A better understanding by the teacher of the standards, okay, really understanding the standards and the rigor of the standards. Number two is collaborative planning, okay, where teachers truly collaborated, and what do they collaborate around? They collaborate around the unit assessments, and really taking a look to see, you know, how are the students performing throughout the year on those unit assessments that really addresses specific standards? And then in, in cases where they see they need to reteach or refocus their efforts, and we saw throughout the year, teachers, where we saw the most success in our schools, almost to, to every single one of them, the principals are going to say, a commitment to teaching the standards and collaborative planning. And, you know, with regards to the unit assessments, that's something that we rolled out with, you know, those were built with the participation of some of our best teachers, and we had some hiccups, you know, throughout the year, but really, the schools that utilized that data, re-taught, refocused, had a lot of success. So that's, those are some of the things that we attribute our success to. So we go to fifth grade, fifth grade, the state, and St. Lucie County was at 1%, but of course, we did have some large gains at CA Moore, one of our highest priority schools. FK Sweet had a 14% improvement, Mariposa 13%, Rivers Edge a 6%, and then Weatherby 6%, Manatee at 5%, and then Westgate at 12%. And there's a lot of green, and I know that I'm just doing some of the larger numbers, but it's always good when you see these spreadsheets, and they have a whole lot of green and very little red. Now, fifth grade is also where they take the science test, and we had a lot of success. Well, I'm not going to say we had a lot of success in science. I think everybody was zeroed in on the FSA math and science. We did have some success here. We had Weatherby at 11% improvement, FK Sweet at 8%. Sam Gaines had a 15% improvement in fifth grade science, Parkway at 11%, and then Rivers Edge at 9. But I want to talk a little bit about that test, because that science test is really, it's a reading test with science content. So we call it an opportunity gap. 45% of our fifth grade students that took that test are on grade level, but 43% passed the test. So we have a 2% opportunity gap, where we have to do a better job of teaching the content. Now, I will say the fifth grade test is a challenge, because it's also third and fourth grade standards. So that, those students are taking a test that, of content that they're supposed to have over the last three years. The teachers could be teaching their fifth grade content, but if it wasn't taught in fourth grade or third grade, or there wasn't a priority, that can hurt our performance on this test. So we're really trying to address this through remediation, tutoring, and also trying to make sure that science does get its fair shake in third and fourth grade, because sometimes even in third grade, we're so focused and zeroed in on the mandatory retention in reading, that we need to make sure that we're teaching that science content, even if it's through reading. Sixth grade ELA, once again, the state was flat, but we had a 3% increase, and we had some really nice movement at Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts with 11%, Manatee 10%, Oakhamic at 12%, Dan McCarty had a 5% improvement, Southport at 4%, and then we had a 6% there at Lincoln Park Academy. Seventh grade, this is the year they take civics, so I'm going to get to that in just a minute, but we had a nice story there. 3% with the state and 4% with us. Fort Pierce Magnet, once again, had a 7% improvement, Manatee a 6% improvement, Northport 10%, Oakhamic 9%, Southern Oaks 10%, and then Southport had a 6% gain as well. So a very nice story there, but an even better story in civics, because our civics, many of our principals really focused on that. Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts had a 9% gain, Dan McCarty a 10% gain, and we just had a great story, Northport 11, Oakhamic 11, Manatee 18%. But take a look at the gap here. Our ELA percentage was 46%, but 69% of our students passed that in the course exam. And let me tell you why there's such a big difference. One of the reasons there's such a big difference between like the science test and the civics test. The civics test is the content taught that year, whereas the science test is taught over a three-year period. So you can kind of see the difference where you have that zero focus and it's one course, and it's an in-the-course exam versus content that's tested over three years. Eighth grade reading, this was the only hiccup that we had as a school district, and the state dropped 2%, and we dropped 4%. And we really are taking a look, we had some successes at Oakhamic and Southport, but we really are taking a close look at what, how we're teaching those standards in eighth grade, because the bottom line is for every grade, for every assessment, we want to make sure that our students are performing, at least to the state, are better. But the bottom line is we didn't see the growth that we wanted in eighth grade. However, our eighth grade science, we had some success at Fort Pierce Magnet, improved by 8% there, and Dan McCarty by 16%, Alapata Flats by 14%, and Westgate by 13%. Now, our state total here, the state was flat in eighth grade science, and we improved by 1%, and we closed the gap with the state. And when I get back to the opportunity gap, we still can perform better on our eighth grade science. So as we plan for next year, you know, we see two opportunities that we have that we can do better, and we plan to.
Dr. Prince?
Yep.
Excuse me, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Just curious, the eighth grade comparisons, looking at Renaissance, I mean, that's huge. Mine, 66% and 76%?
And also, I can tell you, hang on, let me, let me go to.
Why is, why does that look like that? That's so out of bounds from anything in the traditional.
Yeah, and whenever we put the numbers together, I'd have to take a look at the accuracy, because we didn't focus on the charters as much with regards to the eighth grade, so let me check the veracity of that. Because we checked, double-checked, triple-checked all of our numbers.
How could that be right, though?
Yeah.
Okay, move on.
I'll double-check.
Just go.
I know, so third grade math, we're into math. So third grade math, the state was at a 1% improvement, and so was the district, but once again, you know, some of our highest priority schools had the biggest gains, with CA Moore at 16%, and then we had Fair Lawn at 7%, FK Sweet had a nice story at 11%, Lawnwood at 9%, Savannah Ridge at 9%, St. Lucie Elementary at 20%, and Windmill Point at 8, and some of our K8s, a nice story, with Alapata Flats at 8%, and then Sam Gaines and St. Lucie West at 6%. Once again, a better story in fourth grade. The state saw a 5% increase, we saw a 7% increase, and we just had some, a great story in fourth grade in reading and math, with Bay Shore at 12%, Fair Lawn at 20%, Floresta at 10%, Mariposa at 6%, Mosaic had a nice move, Parkway at 8%, St. Lucie Elementary, Ms. Willard's behind me, congratulations, Ms. Willard, moved across the board, Village Green at 8%, Weatherby at 6%, and then White City at 20%. K8's had a nice story, Alapata Flats, you saw Alapata Flats come up a lot at 13%, Manatee at 11%, Oakhamic at 15, St. Lucie West K8 at 8%, and Westgate at 16%. Fifth grade, the state improved by two, we had a 1% improvement, but we still had some schools that did very, very well, with FK Sweet and Mariposa rounding it out. Mariposa, and we're going to get there in just a minute with regard to our school grade projections, Mariposa literally had a transformation over the past year, where they made double-digit improvements in, in almost every grade, they just had a really strong year. Parkway at 11%, Rivers Edge at 16%. And then we get into sixth grade. The state had a 1% improvement, St. Lucie had a 3%, Alapata Flats, once again, 6%, Manatee 7%, Northport 11, Oakhamic 15, Dan McCarty 9, Southern Oaks 9. Now, I'm moving a little bit fast, but I want to, you know what, I just can't wait to talk about high schools. Seventh grade, seventh grade, we had a state total 1% improvement, 3% for St. Lucie, and then Fort Pierce Magnet 23, Westgate 11. Westgate, 11. And then eighth grade, once again, the eighth grade, and I'm going to explain this a little bit. Because it appears that our eighth grade took a dip in, in reading and math, but this is a little bit misleading. Although, for the FSA math, we had a 6% reduction from the previous year. Let me explain why. We put a lot more eighth grade students in algebra. So you're, a lot more of your upper levels, level students are taking that high school course in middle school. As a result, the students that are taking the FSA math, all of your, all of your high level students are, are sitting in those algebra classes. And I've got a good story for the algebra because we put more kids in, but we also improved their performance. So, ninth grade. The state had a 1% improvement. There was a 2% improvement for St. Lucy County. And Port St. Lucy High School moved 7%. St. Lucy West, Centennial 5. Treasure Coast, 4. And then 10th grade, the state was flat. We improved by 2%. We had a nice story. Performance base, Port St. Lucy High, 16%. St. Lucy West, 1%. And Treasure Coast, 5%. So I told you about the algebra proficiency. We put a lot more of our middle school kids in algebra. But at our high schools, and also especially our high schools, we saw double-digit improvement in our algebra numbers. And I'm not going to read all those to you because you can. But, the state versus the district, our district was at 73%, and the state was at 62%. So we had a tremendous improvement, and we exceeded the state averages there. Geometry, double-digit improvement in geometry is an EOC. And also, if you look at the bottom on geometry, the state was 54% passing that EOC, and St. Lucy County was at 61%. Lastly, algebra II, which is the most difficult test. I can't even help my son in algebra now. Forty-five percent of our students passed that assessment. Forty-nine passed the state. But I'd like to orient you to the growth. We had a 9% at Lincoln Park, 13 at Fort Pierce Central, 29% at Westwood, 38 at Port St. Lucy High School. And then Centennial and Treasure Coast had 10% increases. But as a district, we increased by 18%, where the state had a 9% increase. Biology, we once again are higher than the state. They had a 63% average, it's at the bottom. We had a 64% average. Also, the state dropped by 1% and we improved by 1%. And we had a nice story there with Port St. Lucy High School, Treasure Coast. Almost done with all these EOCs, this is the last one, promise. U.S. History. Our schools performed better in U.S. History. However, we still lag behind the state average. We did enclose that gap. We increased by 4% where the state increased by 1%. But we still lag slightly behind them, and we want to exceed those totals next year. So now, here's my most, what we've all been waiting for, I wish I had a drum roll, is our school grade projections.
May I?
Yes.
Before we go on, let the public know that when you're looking at averages, that's, that changes every year. It's not like hitting a benchmark.
Yes, absolutely.
When you're hitting a benchmark, that's static, and then you can...
Yes.
You know, could everybody be above the benchmark?
Right.
But when you're looking at the average, somebody's going to be in the middle.
You hit the nail on the head, Ms. Insley. So let's talk about our elementary school grades. Now, school grades, first of all, these are projections. And you have a point total, 700 possible points for an elementary school, 900 for a K8, and 1,000 for a high school. And schools have to earn 62% of the possible points to be an A, 54% to be a B, 41% of the points to be a C. And we don't want any DNF schools. But the bottom line is, our elementary schools really performed well. We have 19 elementary schools, and out of 19, Bay Shore, we're projecting to increase a letter grade from a C to a B. C.A. Moore, from an F to a C, which is a wonderful accomplishment for that staff. Fairlawn, from a B to an A. And you have copies of this, I gave you a larger copy if you want to look on. It's a three-page document that I passed out. Looks like this, I'm sorry, so you're not straining your eyes.
Dr. Prince, can you tell me the grade percentage? 41% C, 58% B?
54% B, 62% A. It's actually 61.5, round up. So, and you'll see the percentage of points next to the projected grades, and the top line is 2016, the bottom line is 2017 for each school. So Fairlawn went from a B to an A. Floresta went from a C to a B, we project. F.K. Sweet goes from a C to a B. Lakewood Park goes from a D to a C. Lawnwood goes from a D to a C. Mariposa goes from a D to a B. Parkway goes from a D to a C. Rivers Edge goes from a C to a B. St. Lucy Elementary, from an F to a D, but they're very close, they're knocking on the door. So, that's 11 out of 19 elementary schools that we project. And I can't tell you, you know, my experience in, in other districts, you know, that's an amazing accomplishment. And I'm just, can't tell you how proud and excited I am for those staffs, because I know those teachers work very, very hard. And the students work hard. You know, that's really a reflection of the students and their performance. So we also have our K8 schools, and we have nine of those. We anticipate Manatee going from a C to a B. Northport going from a C to a B. Oakhamic going from a C to a B. Palm Point remaining an A. And Westgate, K8, remaining an A as well. And then we get to our middle schools and high schools. Dan McCarty, and if you remember, Dan McCarty and Lakewood Park were on the state list, and they had to perform, and the amount of pressure that those staffs and those principals were under was just unimaginable. And they pulled it out at Dan McCarty, they went from a D to a C. Fort Pierce Westwood, we anticipate going from a D to a C. Lincoln Park Academy maintains their A. Port St. Lucy High School, we anticipate going from a C to a B. Centennial going from a C to a B. And Treasure Coast High going from a C to a B. And once again, you have another document that is just kind of an all-in-one document that takes out all the rows and columns and just gives you the number of points and the grade from last year to this year, and also the change in points. And I just want to recognize, you know, 20 of our schools were anticipating going up a letter grade. But not just that, the, the large point gains, you know, if you have seven cells, and, you know, I'm used to schools going up, you know, 15 to 20 points and calling that a day and patting yourself on the back and saying, you've got a, you've had an amazing, you've had a great year. But our schools were going up 63, 80, 98, 57, 50, 68, 67 points. These are unbelievable. And then Mariposa, 104 points. Port St. Lucy High School, 116 points. 83 points for Rivers Edge. St. Lucy Elementary, 86 points. This is, this is transformational within a school and really building cultures of success because I, what I told the principals, we haven't come close to our ceiling. I mean, we haven't come close to it. I mean, we, we had a lot of success this year, but we've got great opportunity. I know Mr. Gent's going to go over the number of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs, but last year, we had two F-rated schools, and now we have zero. We had seven last year, and now we have three D-rated schools. We've got 17 C-rated last year, we have 14. But we've moved these schools into As and Bs. And that's our goal, for all of our schools to be A and B-rated schools. We've been, Mr. Gent mentioned that we're meeting with our principals. The superintendent's summit was really about best practices and sharing and talking about what we did that got us to where we are. And the principals are coming back this week and meeting with us and the superintendent. In fact, after our executive session this morning, we're going in with a group of principals to talk about, okay, what worked last year, what didn't work, and what are your plans for next year? This has been really powerful because principals are able to talk, and, you know, they're writing down things, you know, I didn't think of that, you know, I can adjust my plan to incorporate that as well. But we had a wonderful year. And I want to thank the executive directors, a couple of them are behind me, Mr. Frank and Ms. Martin, and I know Ms. Willard is just joining us, because those folks work directly with our schools, and they've done just a magnificent job. Dr. Wilder, Chief Academic Officer. It takes a team approach. We have a wonderful cohesive team of district administrators to support our schools, and we take that support very seriously. With the sky's the limit, and I, on behalf of the principals, I just want to thank the board for their support. Because without a, a great board, we can't have great schools. And I think we've moved in a great direction this year to providing a first-class public education for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Dr. Prince, to me, this is just wonderful information, and I along with you, thank the staff. And I mean, where the rubber meets the road, our teachers, our principals, all our administrators. This is important to me because of the budget cuts that we're going to have to look at. I mean, we know the budget, there's no secret, and what's going to come down from Tallahassee. So we have to look at bare bones and see what works and see what doesn't work. Because I, I think we're going to have a tough financial year. So the information you have for us tells us the direction we need to go in. And you are to be commended as well, and the superintendent. Thank you.
I got a great boss. He didn't pay me to say that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Prince.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. The, we're data-driven, but it's all about the student, the individual student. And so while we, while this is a snapshot overview, one of the things that I'm most pleased with, with, with the district and our principals and our teachers, is how they're embracing looking at the data, and that it's something that, the data doesn't lie, it takes the emotion out of things. It's, it's the way it is, and then you look at it, and if it's good news, then let's celebrate that success and continue that. And if it's, if it's areas to work on, then that's where you have to take the honest look on what do we need to be doing. When we compare ourselves, I'm, I'm pleased with the performance that we've had, but by no means satisfied. Because, as John said, the ceiling is there. We have to look at and compare ourselves to the state standard. In some areas, we're right there. In some other areas, we're, we're, we're making gains. Even as the state will make gains, we've got to close that gap. So that represents a major challenge. So when we're able to break this down, and you look at certain schools, certain schools could see tremendous growth in a grade level, or they could see some, some disappointments. The principals, what they do right now is break that down by individual instructor and teachers. And sometimes it's, it could be one instructor that raised the bar for the entire school, or it could be one instructor that caused a dip in that particular grade level. And so when we do this in an environment that we look at the data to see how we can improve, we're trying to build the trust within these collaborative groups, that it's not a get-you system, but it's a system to help support. So just as you go to the doctor, and you go, whether you go a year, yearly, or however often he tells you to show up, or she tells you to show up, it's a, it's a gauge of where I am now, but I've got to continue to do these things if I'm going to continue to be healthy, or I've got to give up these things if I'm going to continue to be healthy. And so we really try to break it down at each individual schools, and the principals have really embraced this, but the district as a whole has, and the teachers are doing that as well now. And so we're very pleased with this. What I want to do is segue over into, into my presentation, it's really like a year in review. A lot of this John's already talked about on the academic, on the academic side. Keep hearing that little noise. Are you ready to roll? Okay. So I wanted to talk about, very briefly, the four focus areas when I've come to the district two years ago and where we really are right now. And that's not on your handout, the first, the first four slides are not on the handout. But our main goal, our focus is teaching and learning, we always have to remember that. And we've talked about the academic rigor, and we've talked about graduation rates and how we use data, progress monitoring, the collaborative planning. My main message to the, to the principals this year was, we really want to fine-tune, and I call it collaborative, learning and planning. Because it's not just about students' learning, it's about the instructors, it's their best staff development can be in that collaborative planning time. Or if I go over to Mariposa, listen, they were listening to Mr. Logue about what things that he did, because you saw some dramatic increases there. You could look at certain grade levels, we talked about St. Lucy Elementary, listen to Latricia, what did you do at the fourth grade or fifth grade in math? So, it's about learning as well as individuals and growing. We talk about, as leaders, we have to continually grow, but our teachers have to do that as well. And there's no better way to do that than in those collaborative learning and planning sessions that they do. I told this to the principals the other day, staff development shouldn't be looked at something we go to Orlando or to Atlanta or leave to get, it's something that we should be able to get right on our own school center as well, at the workplace, as opposed to going to a workshop, although those have their place as well. So we're trying to change that mindset a little bit. Secondly, safe and caring schools, and I'll talk about some of the data that we have, one of our major challenges continues with, with the students, and we, and this board has embraced the trauma-informed care and, and the, and the total child, and the community is on, seems to be on board with that as well. So we have to continue as a high priority for our schools. Talent development and growth, this is where growth just, just doesn't happen by accident, what I've talked about. The biggest challenge that we face, and, and, Dr. Mills, you asked, what do we attribute the success for? It's really teacher, teacher capacity. It's principal, it's principal leadership, and them getting into the weeds and modeling what's expected. But it's our teachers in the front lines and, and the trenches, working with our students. And that's, to me, one of the highest priorities we have, is to build and develop their capacity. And while you may have some pockets of excellence in certain schools or certain grade levels, we've got to expand that across the entire district. And that'll be a heavy emphasis this year, leadership development, areas for growth. And then this one here, I'll show this in a few minutes as well, where we continue to grow, reach out in our community and, and work with the different groups that are out there. I think we've done a nice job with that, really with a small, small, tiny staff of which is sitting right behind me, Carrie, and a little bit of her team. People would, would really don't understand, and I'll talk about it in a few more minutes, about what that job really entails, and how that phone rings off the hook all the time with different rumors and different people that are upset, that contact the media right away with only one side of the story. And, you know, and then they'll run with it if it's, if it's something that's going to be able to make their little headline so that they can increase ratings, whether I, I'm going to get off track here. I, I was watching one of the, one of the local channels talk about how accuracy is so important to them, and we've got to be accurate. And you just want to throw a...
Yeah.
A rock at the screen. Not a rock, it's a new screen, so I don't want to throw anything at it. You know, you just want to shake them in a loving way. But anyway, she's done a really nice job in that, in branding and marketing, and we'll talk more about that. So, this past year, what I would just want to talk about were the goals that I had and how they, where I stand with them. And it's in, it's, you've got it right there in front of you, there's three, three to a page. E.L.A. Proficiency, John has already talked about that. The main goal was third grade. This year, I will increase that, it's going to be across all grade levels, to increase proficiency across all grade levels. We went from 46 to 49. Now, we want to celebrate that we went up 3%, and that's good. But the state made a higher percentage gain, so the gap between us and the state increased just a tad at the third grade level, and we went up continually. This is why pre-K and early childhood and all of those things are so important. Because children come, we don't create the achievement gap in our school district. The gap is there before the children come to us. That is not an excuse, that is, that is a fact. And you all know this better than anyone. And so, sometimes that gap is a lot higher than it is in other areas, and so it's difficult. It just represents a major, major challenge for us, from pre-K through first, second, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. In the past, some places, people will say, well, that's not a tested grade, so let's move that teacher who may be struggling here into first or second grade. Well, that's, that's not good. That's, that's, that's not a good plan at all, because you've got to have that strong, solid foundation. We don't really receive the support that we need from the state level in these areas, and common sense tells us if we would do this at the early, if we would do this at three and four, we wouldn't have the problems we have at 15 and 16 and 17. So we did make the nice movement there, and then this is the good news that John talked about before as well, with each grade level, with, with the English proficiency going up and the math proficiency. John already talked about... John already talked about grade projections that we've had, and I want to push, you know how CNN and Fox have their projections on the election? So this is our projection. We think we're pretty close, we could be one or two off. There's some schools here that are literally, you know, Fort St. Lucie High School was right on the cusp of about four tenths of a percent to be a, to be a B, and then we found something in the social studies data, so now they're six tenths of a percent above a C. So it really comes down to one child in some cases, or two children in some cases, as to what that letter grade can be. And I know what that means to the community, and I know that means, what that means to the perception, and we'll have a nice story to tell. We don't really want to have, I don't want to have any CDs or our schools, but more importantly, I want to make sure that each child in those schools is getting at least a year's worth of growth. And so we'll continue to focus on that, but we will have a good story to tell there. And if 20 of our schools make a, you know, a letter gain, that's over 50% of our schools, you know, and, you know, so it's, it's, it's a nice story. St. Lucie Sores, we had almost 140 volunteers this year, we've worked with big brothers, big sisters, we're focusing, working with Children's Service Council as well. Shameless plug, tomorrow night, no, what's, what's today? Thursday, Tuesday. Thursday night out at the stadium is the, the first one got reigned out, St. Lucie Reads through the Children's Service Council, and so there's going to be the event out there, and free books will be given out to the, to the kids, and free admission to the baseball game as well, and so we work closely with those agencies, outside agencies as well. Sean, no. iReady implementation, the iReady program that we've implemented in our school centers, one of the things that we're finding in meeting with our principals is that this is something that's been very well-received. It's also a very good predictor of where our kids are going to be. It's a computer-based, individualized programming that we can also monitor the students and their performance. If it's done with fidelity, you look down at Mariposa, and you ask them, what are some of the things that you did there? They'll talk about how they, they bought into this, and teachers bought into it. And when you do anything with fidelity, you're going to see a return on investment. But this is something that really helps us to monitor the students and how they, how they line up with the standards. And it's, it's been an excellent tool for our schools, and something that's about a year and a half old as well. So the schools have been embracing it, the principals have seen the value of it, the teachers are seeing that, and when they see that, you know, one of the, one of the things that John answered very well was about what do we attribute the improvement to? Understanding the standards. We're not teaching to a test, but we are teaching to standards that have been established by the state, and those changed significantly three, almost three years ago. And remember how we had the big push to let's gradually, you know, gradually bring that in, so we just don't see some of the fall, people jumping off the cliff that we were going to see? And so this represents really the third year of that implementation, and teachers becoming more and more familiar with the standards that they're expected to teach. And when you break this down, those places that didn't follow that, you'll see some of the slides there, or some of the, some of the places that you may have higher-performing students, and there's a set curriculum that we've been teaching for 20 years or 15 years, or I've got to teach Romeo and Juliet for at least eight weeks to 12 weeks in order for them to understand the concept, that doesn't major up to any standard that the students will, will have to master to show proficiency. And so those are, those have been some kind of things that teachers struggle with, and individuals struggle with, with whatever their, whatever their curriculum area is. So iReady has worked out for us, goal two, to increase college and career readiness. John did a very good job with this. We talked about our industry certifications. One of the other things too, that we have worked closely with the EDC, not hid, you know, they've talked about their skills gap study, we've been actively involved in it, particularly Michael Carbinny has done an excellent job in that area, and we continue to look at that. We saw the industry certifications, you can see Allied Health, Business and IT in the trade area, and those line up with our, with our Treasure Coast region and with St. Lucie County. A lot more work to be done there. In fact, probably in August, the EDC will be coming to a workshop to share some of their information and some partnerships that we have going on with them, and, and that's, that'll probably be in August when we do that, not in July. John already shared with you the industry certifications by schools, so I won't, I won't stay there. The Naviance is a web-based career, it's a tool that came in last year that we continue to utilize. We shared this information with the college, we had a joint meeting with the president and some of his key players and our team about two weeks ago, and they were very interested in this because some of the metrics that they're measured by when students come in and how they get performance funding, similar to what we get as well, they were very intrigued by this, and had not heard of that as well. And we're just scratching the surface of how this program can benefit our students in our district. One of the things I think the board may be aware of, but the SAT School Day, we were able to, to give all of our juniors the test for free, and that was about $140,000 value. Hopefully we can pull that off again this year, right? Are we going to be able to pull it off again?
Plus, plus the PSAT.
Plus the PSAT for juniors. One of the things that's here, when the state talks about the concordant scores, several of our students were able to master a certain score here in, in, in English, ELA. So they may not have performed well in the FSA, but because of the concordant score that you got an SAT, that gave them what they needed to graduate from, the requirement for graduation, and, and we have those numbers as well. But this was a very successful, and then the PSAT, you probably heard this in Tampa or the next state board meeting, which I don't expect, which I'm not going to be attending. You're all are welcome to attend. The, they're going to, the PERT, the PERT is no longer going to be a test that we can use, or concordant score that we can use for students to master Algebra I. The PSAT will be an area, and so they're asking for input, and we're going to work to give input back to the state on that to see if it can benefit our students. So that was a big success. Goal number three, to increase the number of out-of-school suspensions. A good story to tell here, you can see the data from the last three years, but that just tells part of it. We still have a lot of work to do in this area, and this is something that we'll continue to, as long as there's kids in schools, we're going to have to deal with student issues and student challenges. We have to get to the why, of why the children are doing what they're doing, and why the students are doing what they're doing. We're trying to, our students at our schools have been very strategic, and when students are removed from class, to try not to have them removed from an English or a math class or a class that they need to be in, in order to master the skills that they're going to need to master to be, to be able to meet the state standards as well as for their own individual growth. So this represents a major, major challenge to continually. Some folks will say, well, we're not allowed to suspend. That's not the case at all. What we have to do is look at, we're going to be, we have a consultant that we worked with the last two years, her name's Dr. Allison Adler, and I'm probably going to get her in front of you here this year. And she works on what's called the single school culture, and you've told me, you've heard me talk about culture, it was the first thing I talked about when it came to the school district. And we talk about single school culture in academics, and in the behavior, and in the overall climate of the school. And those schools that do that well, you see the benefits of the academic performance. It, it comes out in academics, it comes out in the behavior, and it comes out of the general feeling of the climate of the school, on how it feels around here. And she's worked in several schools, and they've had some really nice, some really nice data. And that's something that we want to expand in our other schools, working closely with Bill and his team and his department. So this is something that is a good story to tell, but again, not satisfied with where we are at all. And it's the toughest job for our teachers, and it's, even at the kindergarten level, the behavioral problems that come in, and kindergarten teachers are not behavioral health specialists, and they're not going to be able to fix that. They can look for the warning signs and then refer to the, to the appropriate agencies to try to help students. But that represents not only in St. Lucie County, but I think in the nation as a whole, the number one challenge. You've seen the trauma, you know, we know about trauma-informed care, and we saw paper tigers, and we saw about resiliency, but that's going to get worse, I think, before it gets better as a nation. Goal four, to increase the graduation rate, we have a great story to tell there. Again, these are going to be the projections for this year. So you can see, we went up, we're all aware, almost to 87%. We're anticipating a 2% to a 3% increase in that to 89 to 90%. You can see the individual schools that are there, but you'll see everybody over 85% this year. Four schools, maybe five schools in the 90% range, which is a great story to tell. And I'm, I'm being very cautious here and not trying to, we'll just say we're shooting for 89%, and if we hit 90, that'll be great, but we'll still have a nice story to tell there by school. And what's important here as well is that the different, we're a very diverse community, and that if, that is not just, that is, that's for Hispanic students, that's for African-American students, that's for Caucasian students, you see the growth in every area. And that's what I'm particularly most proud of, is it's, it's all groups of students, all diversities that are being met there. Goal five, to improve HR effectiveness, we have a great story. Dr. Sanchez, Rafael presented to you all a couple of, maybe it was last month or the month before last, but we talked about where we are in this area, and a 16% decrease right now in vacancies for the school year. This shows some of the information on the total non-reappoint, we have almost a 7% decrease. A lot of that deals with the general, DK is the General Knowledge Test, we're 25 teachers we were able to help to pass that this year. You can see the total vacancies. And another thing, the promise is a promise. You know, four years from now, you're going to have 113 kids, and if, if two, if three quarters of that, or two-thirds of those kids come back, you know, you're at 90, you have, you have a pool, a talent pool there of students that want to come back to the district. So that's a nice story to tell there, of the increase there of almost 40, 50 students from one year to the next year, to try to keep that pipeline coming into the district. And then he showed you the webpage that they've had, and the geo-fencing that we've done out there. We went to our, you know, the geo-fencing that we've done in everywhere, this is for the black colleges and universities to do a really concentrated effort to bring more diversity into our teaching and administrative areas. And then goal six, engage community organizations, tell the story. And Carrie's done an outstanding job there, you can see almost 1,000 likes up in Facebook, and then Twitter, up 27%. And then the app, we have the, I hope everybody here, I won't ask you, has the app, has the St. Lucie Public Schools app on your phone? And you can see an increase there of almost 1,300, 3,500 folks. This is something we do work closely with, our realtors, with the Chamber of Commerce, they've come into our schools and visited, we've got an app, they made a suggestion for us on the app, and so we've, you know, we work, Carrie does, again, an outstanding job with those folks, like on which school should I attend, and this helps our realtors as well. And then we can see the YouTube, the subscribers, we just did our graduations, and they're all live-streamed on YouTube, and you've seen that. There's a sheet in front of you, it looks like this, and it is the, it's the survey of quality. We do a lot of surveying, and we do a lot of, we want to get feedback on how we're performing. And we do this for the school, school effectiveness questionnaires, and then the principals go over that, and they go over that with their schools and their SAC teams. But I also do that here as a district on what we're doing, and I just wanted to share this with you, that this is, this is the survey that goes out to the principals on the quality of support that they're receiving from the district, because that's, we are here to serve the district, the schools are not here to serve us. And in every, almost every area, you can see an increase in the overall average. And when you break this down, it's on a scale of one to five, with four and five being effective and highly effective, and then one and two would be, I don't know what the official word, not good and bad. And so you can see the, and then the familiarity index, well, how familiar they are with that area. You look at career technical education, you know, 4.77 overall on a scale of five. And I'm, I'm going to hit a couple of these, you look at the school security, Brian's over there, you want your schools to make sure that they feel like they're supported and safe, and you can see that school security is right up there, is one of the highest, one of the highest services that we have in our schools. You can see ITS, you can see HR, how they've gone up, the legal, every, every area here has increased. Some areas, we have some room for growth in, but it, but, but everybody's, what's, what I'm proud about is that every area is moving up on the perception from our principals and administrators on the level of support that we're giving to the school centers, and we'll continue to do, to do this as well. So it's a nice story to tell. And as John was talking about, the, and I know they're all sitting behind me, and I brought them in here on purpose, because, and I didn't mention all of their areas, so if I didn't talk about finance, and if I didn't talk about facilities, and exceptional education, the tremendous job Bill does, all of them, it's a team, team effort. I'm going to, I'm going to open it up for questions here in a moment, but I wanted to show you a little video that I showed our, Mrs. Holly saw this, that we showed our principals. There's no Lone Rangers in the school district, just as we expect the learning and collaborative teams to work. I expect that here for our district as well, so we talked about no Lone Rangers, and we talk about really teamwork. And it's such a simple, simple concept, and yet it's something that we really, I'm really proud of the team that I have here, that I work side by side with, particularly the cabinet crew and how we've grown together as a group. So let me, before I go to that, all right, I messed up here, first mistake this week. These will be my goals this year, the main goals, many of them are similar, to increase the ELA proficiency in grades three through 10 as opposed to grade three, we're going to create a leadership dashboard. And what that is, that's really going to be technology-oriented, where our principals and our teachers can go on, and we're going to be ahead of anybody in this area. This is something that Terrence has picked up on his travels out there on these different boards that he serves on, that we are welcome to allow him to serve on, as long as he realizes that he belongs here in St. Lucie County.
He has to come back home.
Nowhere else. And so we're going to be creating this leadership dashboard, because we have come a long way in our, in our data analysis, and the principals and the teachers and the team have really been picking that up, but we have a next phase in that. College and career readiness, we continue want to do to decrease the out-of-school suspension. So those will be the top four. The other ones will be involved in that. I'll bring this to you in more detail for the January 11th school board meeting for you to vote on that improvement, but that will represent the goals for the year coming up. So I wanted you to all-
Kyle Silver, away!
All right, so I wanted to end it on a high note there, but again, what we've tried to develop here with the trust in the, in the crew behind me, and the principals, and the school centers, like I said, we've had a good year, I think an excellent year, not by any ways, any means satisfied, but happy where we are. I always tell you guys, even if you're on the right track, you get run over if you don't keep moving. So we have a good story to tell, and we'll continue to move in a positive direction, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you all in the school district.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion?
Years ago, it'd be many years ago, we were in Oregon, we taught a class at the college that was called Disrupting the Disruptor. And the goal of that was the same thing, and that, that whole area was that we had such a high, you know, lack of attendance at the high schools. And a lot of that started in the lower grades with bad behavior, and the teachers hadn't been taught traditionally at the colleges and universities about how to do classroom management with difficult children. And I think that's where we have been for a while, and starting with our three-year-olds, with our early learning and trying to help that, mitigate that bad behavior, find out what's causing that bad behavior, letting it work up to the system. So hopefully we have some things in place at the earliest levels that eventually will show. show, but.
Right. No, it, you're exactly right, and the training's important for the teachers. The most important place is the training at home to start there, but we know that's not always the case. Well, you know, we've heard, you've heard the slide, you've seen the slide, the child's first and best teacher should be the parent, but that's not the case for all of our kids, unfortunately. So then we have to, we step in with other, but the schools can't do it alone either. We've got to get the outside agencies, of which you all are more familiar with that than I am, what's available out there.
We have an opportunity, the State League of Women Voters Conference. There are some people from the villages, no less, who are looking into doing, and actually they are going to be doing, a early school readiness and VPK study on the baseline amount of money to get the quality of teachers that are needed, what the quality should look like and that sort of thing. So we will be, now that they have said that they will do that, we will be trying to feed them some information, and maybe we will have some real statistic that we can actually show statewide about why investment in the earliest years is going to pay off to the state over the long term.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. Henson.
Yeah, absolutely. The early childhood, the earlier we get them, the better. I mean, we start assessments on our children at the preschool I'm at, at a year old, because many children come into us that are drug or alcohol addicted when they're born, and to mitigate those situations, you have to start young, and those children eventually end up in the school system. So it is the social, emotional, but it's also physically what's the harm that's been done to many of our children, unfortunately. One of the things, I think the village mentality, and I think Dr. Mills and Kenny Mills have created the Speakers Bureau, and I would, I think many of our kids are, by the time they're in middle school and high school, we have lost some of the ability to navigate, but I think because the Speakers Bureau has included so many of our community leaders, that I would love to see Dr. Mills have that opportunity to work with our team that are working with the young men and women that have been suspended. I am a big advocate, if kids are violent, I don't want them in the classroom with teachers. And I've seen that situation. My daughter's taught in St. Lucie County. One of them was physically injured by a student. Now, yes, she was teaching a variable exceptionalities class, and that is somewhat to be expected. But number one, I want our staff safe, and number two, I want the children and teenagers to get the help they need. But I would love to see, because she's already put it in place, Dr. Mills has already put it in place, I would like to see that taken further and actually work with that toughest group of kids that are getting continual suspensions and out-of-school suspensions, and because it's not the school, it's the family, and we can't continue to do what we do if it doesn't work. You've shown us what does work, so I would like to see that, the social, emotional part, and use that agency. She's already doing that, and she's had great success. I'd like to see that go a step further, because I think that can help especially with our middle and high school students.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I think that tags into things that are already in place, what the training is going on with the conflict resolution and that sort of thing at our Club Rocks when the kids are suspended, but also what's going on with the gang initiative coming out of the roundtable and those things that are on the street. The Parent Academy is expanding their offerings of what they're doing dealing directly with families. And so we have a group of people who are dealing with the kids, but we also have a group of people who are now dealing with the parents. And starting at middle school is fine, that doesn't work. It's got to start much earlier and then build up through the system. And I think that putting everything together, looking at the matrix that's been put together in this county, I think that those pieces maybe need to work together more closely, but I think they are working together very closely. And we can look at our trend data for twenty-five years and five years and see that statistically what's happened in our community has been significant as far as the community goes. And I'll give a little history for those that haven't heard it. I think you probably already have. When we did the first study in nineteen ninety-eight through, it wasn't the roundtable, it was through the Children's Services Council, which was fairly new at the time, we found out there were over two thousand, about two thousand, two hundred and fifty-some students under the age of twenty-two self-identified gang members in this county. So the big focus has been, how do we change that? When we did the last analysis a couple of years ago, it was less than two hundred. So we're not there yet, but don't forget, but progress has been made by the fact that the community has surrounded that issue. The concern has always been to not allow the violent uptick, even though the numbers are lower, that the violence may be higher, and that when we moved here from another place, there was a shootout of three gangs in Port St. Lucie. I think Port St. Lucie would like to forget that, but the gangs were heavily in Port St. Lucie. And we actually, Northport and at Port St. Lucie High, they pulled buses across the, in front of the building, so the kids could not see what was going on in the streets. And I think we have made significant progress, so making a targeted effort to make sure everybody's talking to each other and using best practices, I think will continue to take us those next steps.
I think those best practices that you mentioned is very important, and you mentioned that as well, and in what has helped, Dr. Prince mentioned it as well, being able to find out what is the best practice and bringing those people in so that others can see and can duplicate and implement. And one of the things that we have found, and those that have been with us with the Speakers Bureau, is that when community people come in and school personnel, you know, I mean, administration has been in, I mean, we've just had an influx of those that have spoken into the children's lives, you can hear pen drop. You see them listening. Once you can get a child to listen, you can teach them. And so that is what that has done, and when we talk about behavior problems, in the past, we've ignored these kids, and they need to have our attention so that someone is speaking into their lives other than the other gangs and the other situations that they come from at home. They need to hear others speaking into their lives. So whatever we can do to continue that, we are willing to do so, because we know that it's not the children, it's, it's the adults we have to adjust in order to make sure the children can move forward.
Well, I have faith in the grandfather of education, Mr. Jen.
What'd you call him?
Grandfather of education. The years of experience is saying here, there's no doubt that I know that Mr. Jen is going to move our system academically, socially, mentally, through ESC, through whatever venues. Coming up from Palm Beach, that's what we were looking for, someone that knew processes and knew how to put these things in place, to take care of putting together teams and creating culture to move not just our school district, but our community. And I have total faith in what he's doing, and he has a map, and he's guided it out. He has his three-year map, five-year map, and he's done a phenomenal job, you and your team both.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was going to bring in the article out of the paper where everybody said it was such an honor to work with the president and how wonderful it was to give the staff to make sure that they had told Mr. Jen that he's the most wonderful thing on earth, but I didn't do that, so.
Well, it's, we can't do anything without people, and you win with the right people. And you don't win with people, you win with the right people. And I think we have the right people, but we have to continually monitor that, evaluate that, because it's really, the team thing is not just lip service, it really is true. And so anything, anything that we've accomplished, we've accomplished as a group, as a board, and as a team of a district. And, you know, I appreciate the comments, except for the beginning, and, but I am a grandfather. I am a grandfather. I'm going to bring them both in here one day.
Any more comments?
We have an executive session that'll be very brief right after this.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, grandma.
What'd you do?